Okay.
Uh, we start our invocation. Mr. Smith, would you lead us in word of prayer?
Yes, sir, please. Father God, we come this evening to this city council meeting. Father God, let it be what you want it to be. Father God, bring us close together. Father God, we all need prayer. We all need a blessing. Father God, the world we're living in is falling apart, but we know you're in the fixing business. You will fix it. Father God, we want to bless each and every one of these city councils, their family. Lift them up, make them stronger, make them better councilmen, make them better Christians, and they'll be better people for this world. And Father God, I was asked to do this prayer, but the Bible tells you to be ready, so I hope I'm ready. And Father God, we blessed the chief over there tonight. We ask that you keep him safe and sound and out of harm's way. It is awesome. God, we've got so much to be thankful for. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. And most of all, God, we thank you for this gathering here tonight. In one voice, we all say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We'll do our pledges now. Place the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Bigly seated. I recall some order. The October twenty twenty five meeting of Milford City Council is Thursday, October sixteenth. And I declare all the notices legally posted according to the Open Meetings Act, and four of them is present. All council members are present, except for council member Patricia Byrd, and she's advised me that her husband has having some health problems, so I hope you all keep her in your prayer. Him and her both in your prayers. So I can't get the words out. And her presence is always a blessing to us. Open mic session. Do you have anyone that wanted to address the council?
We have. Why? And Mr. Martin Soson?
Okay, Mr. Boson. He'll be in three minutes.
Okay. I'd like to come to the city council meeting, and I just see me and my wife. Today, with all the plant approvals and all that going on, y'all know y'all real busy, so I'm gonna try to be real quick. I gave you a little sheet here. I just want to introduce our church to you guys. The Mount Mariah Church Men's Ministry. We're out trying to... Our goal, mission statement, encourage the men of Milford to exhibit the love of Jesus through raising funds and also through giveaways to the community. We had an event that we gave, we sold a fundraiser of glow toys on the seventh with the, under the police night out, and we were planning on giving away some gas giveaways at Ro- Roper. And at Christmas, we're giving away toys for the neighborhood. We're trying to just give back the men's ministry at Mount Mariah. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Anyone else that...
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consented in, consented one, agenda as written.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda for September. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll go to departmental reports, parks and streets, water and sanitation in Washington.
October report, twenty twenty five. On the sewer part, we have a, a cation leak on West Water. It was plugged, and it wasn't, I mean, we plugged it in, and we thought we had it fixed, right up by your house. But it started bad leaking again, so Williams Plumbing is supposed to be coming back out and trying to fix that problem. I think we might have to go underneath the tunnel and fix that problem. Let me see. So I'll be showing the council some updated pictures of the, uh, shore thing. I didn't have my pictures printed up today, so. And on the water side, we have a water leak on Main Street. We require hydrovac work due to fiber optic and AT&amp;T lines crossing the path of the leak. The leak is coming from the bottom of the fire hydrant, which has concrete pad around the base. Williams Plumbing will be getting back to me with, on the date to fix that leak, because it's gonna take a little bit more time because they have a concrete pad, and we don't have the tools, the right tools to fix that at the moment. The city has a new two-inch water tap morning on Church Street, scheduled for Sunday afternoon, which, uh, that was October twelve, twenty twenty five. The tap is already done. The city will also be laying seventeen hundred feet of two-inch water line from North Church Street to the back entry of the West Wa- Waste Water Treatment Plant to increase the wa- uh, water volume to the plant. The city had twenty-two door knockers, three turnoffs for this month, uh, September twenty twenty five, on the streets. The city now has roadways and recycled asphalt to fill in deep pipe holes on Bozday Ark and other areas where wash downs occurred due to heavy rain. The city will continue to use bag asphalt only on pipe holes where it's likely to be effective and remain patched after rain. Uh, we sprayed weed killer along the sides of the bridge, where the tall weeds were growing on the West Cross Main. We used the bu- backhoe to pull out some of the trees and the weeds, and we also went, took the brush hole, and we kind of went over that to make it look cleaner. On the parks, the city has two park benches with property damage, one beside the South Picnic Table and one on the west of the Picnic Table. I'm not sure if you guys seen that. It was damaged.
Somebody pushed it over.
This one right here.
Is that vandalism?
Not here in the park.
And also have, uh, the Milford, Milford ISD held a pepper rally at the park. Everything was picked up outward, and the event had a great turnout. And also, uh, the kids, the Milford ISD, they did some, uh, some drawings for our city flag. So you guys just, I'm not sure when you guys want to pick this out, or for the city flag for the city, so just passing along. And this week, the Public Works Department and the Road Ranger will be having a movie night scheduled for Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at six P.M. We hope to see y'all there. That's all I have.
Where's that at?
At the park. Started at six P.M.
All right, we'll move to, uh, building inspection, public enforcement.
Yes, sir. Under the residential side, we did two plan reviews. Both of them were approved. We issued two permits and did two inspections. Under the non-residential or commercial side, we didn't have any plan reviews, but we did do six inspections of non-residential construction, most of those being at the school.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Mr. Davis, you're on. Good afternoon. So it was a, been a couple of busy months for Fire Department. That's why we haven't been showing up to the council meetings. Last month, Fire Department ran about twenty-two calls. We had two retire calls to Hill County. We also had a standby at Untieden. They was doing some burn testing on one of their chambers. And Hillsborough Fire wasn't able to make it, so they asked us to, ten times, posting any other department in Hill Co- uh, Hill County, to the end. That's about it for the Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. Uh, municipal court?
Um, the court has been busy. Our citations are up, as y'all can tell. We're at two hundred and eight for last month. I will let y'all know it's already over that for this month. We had a hundred and thirty-three citations closed out, and we had trials, bench trials this month, which we had one show for and two did not show, so they get warrants and FDAs.
Thanks. Next will be the police department. Chief?
So yeah, the police are up. Last month, we're up two hundred and sixteen. We're, I checked while ago, we're at two thirty for this month. Two weeks still to go, so citations are up, traffic stops are up. Over eighty-three percent of those are occurring on the I- thirty-five corridor last month, so that's the majority of your stops. We're catching the right violators, I believe. Yeah, in front of you, later, we're gonna be talking about the policy, the cat, TNR policy, so you'll have that. Soon, we'll probably be putting out something on Facebook or the website or something, asking for volunteers. That's what it's gonna take. I'm still working with the lady on that, so she says it's still a little warm yet for implementing that, so we've got some time. SRO position at the school, update on that. Next year, tentatively, we have an agreement between me and the city superintendent to implement a full-time officer there, so, um, budget-wise, we couldn't make it work this year with theirs or ours, so... But we do have a plan to make that happen, so that'll probably be posted sometime in May, May-ish next year, and hired probably in June to get them trained up and ready to go for the August start. There's a request, I believe in here, for a grant rider. It's gonna be about twenty-five hundred dollars, issuing the grants, and that has to do with two of those items that we don't really need to discuss. But I wanted y'all to see those. That's why I wanted to put in there for the expense of what those cost. And I believe we can get some relief from that on seeking through grants and get those paid for, both body cameras as well as a block system and how that works, and data collection as well as enforcement. About two weeks ago, Sergeant Johnson was working, it was on a Saturday night, and FLOCK is a camera system. It's a surveillance system. They have them up in Locksatchu. There's none south of Locksatchu in Ellis County. They reported it in real time. There was a stolen vehicle southbound. He had the description. Charles went out, stopped it, and got the guy, got the vehicle, um, stopped and apprehended the violator, took care of all that. Still working that investigation in the back. Last week and this week, on Thursday, the day he worked with all of that task force on some of that, so it was a pretty big case. I think it was out of Alabama, so there's multiple agencies involved in that. So that was something, FLOCK was helpful. Even though it wasn't ours, we were still able to help with that, so... Let's see. I do have a reserve officer that's applied. I'm looking to hire, uh, hire him, depending on the background check, depending on that. He, talking with him yesterday, he can probably work two days a month, it looks like, so that would give us some help, especially on the weekends and things, so, um, let's see. So the officers are wanting to switch shifts, so that looks like that's gonna happen very soon, probably next week. So instead of having two old nights, we're having two old days and one to go tonight. They're basically flip-flopping. The entire department is meeting the needs of their families, and there's a couple of benefits to us as a department and the city as well, so Kim's probably gonna get busier, so with tickets going up, getting hired, just expect that. I do have chief school required. Have to go Thursday to the seventh next month. I'll be at St. Houston State for that first week of November, so Charles will be here, my sergeant, so I'll still be available, but I'll be in mandatory classes, so I'll kind of be out of pocket for a little bit that week. Uh, let's see. And brush hog. They have an old brush hog, correct? Is that, um, they're wanting to sell or get rid of that's got some damage to it? And that's something, I told them we could auction if they want to do that. We did get that auctioned off on that truck last month, so I think that added, what, five hundred and ten gross dollars?
That's more than I thought.
Yeah, I mean, you never know, so, um, so we did get that, and, uh, the brush hog. The older one has damage to it, and we could still get some money out of that, so we may look to auction that here very soon, so... Other than that, I have nothing else. I should have something you wanted to discuss.
Does the flock cameras, they help us with coordinating with other law enforcement agencies?
Yeah, so what FLOCK is, what you're buying into is two things. And one, it's surveillance. And the two, you're buying into their nationwide system. So if you have a, say you're looking for a certain vehicle, you can, you've got a license plate, and you punch it up, and it tells you what cameras they keep hitting. So it'll tell you, okay, well, this is probably where they're living, so you can narrow it down. Another thing we did today, I signed a, in a local agreement with Dallas County to do their AIS, which is Adult Information System. Doesn't cost us anything. It allows our guys to, if they're working a case, let's say something happens out here on the highway or whatever, and someone flees and we got some information, they can go into Dallas County's, uh, information system, punch up what they got, whether it be a plate, a name, whatever, come up with information that they've handled that person, what address, phone numbers, and things like that. So it's some information sharing that I, we got that done today, it looks like, I'll send it over to them, so... They've got, their county judge has to sign off on it, that everything looks fine, so... But yet, the flock is, um, where it would, they would set cameras up at three oh eight, as well as that on thirty-five. They would have one camera that's facing Road Ranger's, kind of the details that they were showing me, and that would be a twenty-four-hour recording, so we would be able to access that if something happens. Pull that up, it gives you full digital, uh, portraits as well as film from the outside, because inside of the Road Ranger, you're gonna have plenty of their videos as well. You can capture that outside and leading in there, and as it records plates, so the one camera's gonna record every plate that goes by, and it's gonna keep uploading. And then you can have it to alert. Obviously, if it's a stolen, you want it to alert to you in real time, and you can go get it. You can have it alert for warrants. You can have it alert for certain, you know, just felony warrants. If you just want it out, or if you wanted to hit for registration violations that were more than six months out or a year out. So that leads you to other issues like insurance and things like that for that driver. So there's a lot of information that that's, could be useful for, not to mention data that we could access other cameras all over the country and pull up if we're looking for a certain vehicle or something.
I wanted to say I like the towing business.
What's that?
I like the towing business right now.
The tow? Oh, yeah. Yeah. What'd we get?
Eleven.
Eleven tows last month? It was only two weeks, so it was a nice, nice little deposit, so just for towing. But it's, uh, it's fluid, because, you know, there's always some mannerisms of when we may not tow, and sometimes we would, but most of the time, we're, we're having, because no insurance, and if they have an SR suspension or a D L, we'll get over that.
Okay. Anything else? I know you got some things on the agenda. We'll get to that a little bit.
Talk to that.
We got some guests here. I want to get to their business first. We'll go to number five, discuss the city's Texas General Land Office Resilient Committee's program grant. Mr. Aguilar?
It's not actually me.
Think about that.
It's your grant administrator, but she had something come up, so we worked together a lot, so I said, I'll come, because I love visiting with you guys. I'll come do it for you, so I have a little deal here. But a couple of years ago, when I was here, actually sitting over there, I told you guys how we had gone to the county and got you this extra one point four million dollars for the plan, right? And it was great. The city wasn't gonna come out of any, any pocket of any money. Well, at the same time, we had applied, or we, this Kim had gotten with the grant administrators and applied to the General Land Office or wanted to get money from the General Land Office for you guys to have like a, a new comprehensive plan done that includes like zoning and all those things like that. So, uh, so that money, that money that the city would, would, would qualify for is about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but no matching fund. It's all grant money, okay? So what we want to do, since it's been a long time, what was it, tip twenty twenty-three, the end of twenty twenty-three that we?
Yes.
That we did this, okay, so we awarded it, the city awarded it to your grant administrator in twenty twenty-three. But because we've had all these, this other stuff coming with the, uh, with the ARP money that was given through the county and through the city, and we had this one thing going, we didn't want to have multiple things going with these big, at the same time, uh, to maybe hurt the city, so we wanted to, what was the best of them. So now, the grant administrator's getting ready to submit the application on the city's behalf, and what the intent is, is to do exactly that. Now, what she told me is that it'll be a comprehensive planning and zoning ordinance, building codes, and flood damage prevention ordinance. That's where they will, that's where they will get you guys a new thing. So we will be working together with the city, and we're gonna be doing it with them, so that's why, that's why I'm here, because we're gonna be doing it with them, since we work with the city so much. But, but we have to submit it, so we just want to make sure that next month, there's gonna be a, an ordinance that you guys, no, resolution, that you guys have to pass or accept next month. So we just didn't want to show up next month with a resolution and everybody say, well, what's this for? It's so that we can submit the application for this grant and get you guys the money, but it all has to be submitted in by December. So, so that's, that's what we're gonna try to do. We're gonna try to go for the max money, which I think is about two fifty or two seventy, something like that. It's the max money for your population, and so we're gonna try to go for the max money. And then the General Land Office, which is the federal government, will come back and say, well, no, we only want to give you this much, or yes, since your last planning document wasn't done for ten years, then you qualify for the full amount, and they'll just give us the full amount to, to start going. Uh, they typically give you multiple years to get this done, but we don't want to wait multiple years. We want to get it and just start going, so... So we just wanted to inform you. Nobody probably remembers that two, a year and a half ago, you guys awarded this to, uh, to Grant, I mean, to Taylor and Associates, so as your grant administrator. And Lizette is the new grant administrator, Lizette Howard. She's great. You guys will love her. I've worked with Lizette for a long time, but she's never worked with you guys. It's, it's always been more blended with their firm, but now Lizette's here. She's great. She's on top of things. She's really informative. She's, she's really informed about everything else, too, so... That was all I'm coming here for, was just to make sure that I made you guys aware, so that next year, next year, next month, when you have the resolution brought in front of you, that you guys know, okay, this is, this is for, all right, yes, let's go ahead and move forward.
Is Howard gonna send us the?
Yes, yeah, she's working with Kim on all of that stuff. She just had a family situation come up tonight, so, um, so I told her.
I like to use the wording that they like to use, so...
Yeah, yeah, she'll, she'll, yeah, she'll, she'll provide the resolution document to, to Kim, and then we'll just provide it to you. You guys have done a lot of these things, so you know, it's just about just passing it and then moving forward with it, so... Does anybody have any questions about any of this stuff?
What three things did you?
It was a, it's a, it's a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. It's, it's, uh, building, your building codes, it's just, you know, update your building code, so... Like, so for your building code, it's gonna develop, adopt, implement modern and resilient building codes that meet specific performance requirements. But the flood damage prevention ordinance is to develop, adopt, and implement flood damage prevention ordinance. Uh, this requires the community enforce new builds being built at least two feet above the base flood elevation. Okay, and then you guys can, you guys can say, we just want to do a complex zoning. If you're asking our recommendation, I'd say, hey, if they're gonna give you the money to do this, to have, have, have us all look at it, then let's do that. But it's up to the city ultimately. So, um, so if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer the best I can from, from what I know. Man, I did that good, huh? That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Hey, I appreciate you guys having me, and then y'all just call me if you need me, and I'll talk with a couple of you guys about giving me a call a little bit later. Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank y'all.
Stay dry.
Thanks, kid. Take drive, yes, sir.
Everybody stay safe. Thank you. Number six, discussing the reviewed concept plan for Warner Reserve Plan Development. Mr. Davis?
I wanted to first just thank the police chief. He's gonna let me use the FLOCK system to track all the developers that come into the city, so I, no one are here. I'm Jeffrey Davis. We started looking out here in Milford about two years ago, trying to find a land for, for power. As y'all know, the power stuff has disappeared in the state of Texas. So Mr. Warner, who has owned the ranch for forty-three, fifty-three years, forty-three years, something like that, really wanted it to be conserved. He really loves the property. He loves the land. My business partners love the land and love the preservation of land. We went to TCU. TCU told us there'd be no thousand-acre ranches left in the state of Texas in twenty years. So what we decided to do in Warner's Reserve is to put about ninety-three homesites that are four to ten acres or bigger. And, and there's a thousand acres in the middle, so every homeowner will own a piece of the thousand acres. We're gonna put some dock course holes out there. We're gonna put, we're not gonna disturb any of the property in the middle. Over a thousand acres of it will stay that way and be owned by the homeowners. Uh, we've asked the mayor and everybody else we've talked to about annexing into the city. We think there's some, some benefits to our clients to be able to say that they're the city of, of Milford. Their, our nineteen hundred and fifteen acres is currently not in the city limits. We think it'll generate about a million dollars a year, once it's completely built out, and additional tax revenue from Milford. There's lots of excitement. We're having about two thousand hits a day to our website and social media platforms, which is gigantic. We've got four or five pre-sales for people that want to come out here and preserve the land. And we're a real friendly, hands-on developer. I've been in the city almost every day for the last nine months. If anybody sees me and you have any questions or want to know what we're doing, I cleared up a few misnomers with some people in this room before. We're not tearing down Mr. Warner's house. We're not putting a thousand homes out there. Deor Horton is not building in my subdivision. We're gonna have, we think the, the average lot price in the subdivision's over four hundred and eighty thousand for a single lot. Most of the houses will be one point two million dollars or more. Oh, sure. They, they all have one.
Yes, they have it in the folder.
We think it's, it's awesome. I've been developing subdivisions for twenty years. I discovered Hutto, Texas. Y'all know where the Ikea is there outside of Ram Rock. I was the first development. My lookout over Brushy Creek, we discovered Hutto, we were the first new development in Hutto twenty years ago, and now Hutto has twenty or thirty thousand people. And now Hutto has twenty or thirty thousand people and has a massive revenue base. We're not looking to do that, we like the peace and quiet of, of Milford. There's a lot of people that want to get out of the cities and to come to places like this where they can have a peace and quiet again. We went to baseball tournament in Kemp and I got to meet all the people that lived in Kemp were from Forney because they just wanted to get away from the city stuff that had grown all the way out to Forney, so they moved one spot further out. So we're going to preserve the land, we're going to be stewards of the property, we're going to be stewards of the city. We're going to generate tax revenue for the city, we're going to annex in so the city has the ability to get our tax base. If anybody has anything that they want, the mayor's talked to us about, about some baseball parks. So we have in the last two weeks been trying to encompass somewhere on the front part of our property where we could put some baseball diamonds so that we can turn it over to the city and they can generate some money for it for some baseball leagues to come out here and throw some pitches. I could sit up here and talk for an hour, I love what I do, I have a deep passion for, for people. I've developed fifteen or so thousand lots in the Woodlands, Conroe, Montgomery area before I came up here. We met with the pictures that the council has of the homes, that is Paul Cork. He is Cork Builders, Custom Builders out of Waukesha Hatchie. He is out here today and he's committed to building a two million dollar spec on one of the lots just as soon as I can get away with it. I love you guys. Anybody have any questions? My engineer's here, this is Landon in the back.
How's it going?
Yes, the world's largest engineering firm in Fort Worth, Texas.
One day.
One day. He's a Texas tech grad, so we love him dearly. You know, we're all local, my business partners are from the Dallas-Fort Worth area and they grew their, their abundance and wealth from the Dallas-Fort Worth area. Jenna and I live in Burleson, he lives in Waukesha Hatchie, Landon's in Fort Worth. We're not from New York City, we're not trying to bring something crazy here, we want to conserve as much of the property as we can, not disturbing the lakes, the ponds, the creeks. We think it's an awesome opportunity for the ninety people and what it'll bring to the city.
Anybody on the council have questions?
The star on the map is a, a star that we've talked to the city, we've talked to the mayor and I think Buddy about possibly giving that to the city, for the city to build some future water, fire, police. Mayor's office, maybe he'll get an actual office, we'll see more than once a week. So we're, we're open to a lot of things, we're not, we're not the greedy hardcore developers. We, we want to see the city grow as much as we want to build something beautiful.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate you coming and sharing with us, so people kind of have some idea of who's behind this and what you're all about. Supposed to put their imaginations for a while.
I'm a, I'm a fifty-year-old man that's got a six and a four-year-old child, I am, I am all about the family. And I want something great out here, I'd love for my kid to come play baseball out here and go ride his four-wheeler out here, I mean, that's, that's the goal. I want my kid out here someday. Thank y'all for y'all's time. I have a four and a six-year-old at home, so we're going to excuse ourselves to go put them to bed. Thanks for having our time, thanks for seeing us, y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing.
I think we had decided to take our seven and eight. Just delays there that need to be taken care of before we go to final consideration on those. At least we have final preliminary at the same time as we've already looked at it pretty thoroughly, have them, Christian Meadows. I was just thinking why we have preliminary and final at the same time.
This subdivision's been going on now for three or four years, and so I kind of came into it and at the end stages. We were presented with a final plat and we got to check in the records and the preliminary plat was approved by the council, but it's been over, over a year, it's been like fifteen or sixteen months ago since you approved the preliminary. And by your zoning ordinance, the preliminary plats only give for twelve months. So before we can approve a final plat, they had to come back with a preliminary plat, so that's what we've been waiting on. And while we was doing that, we found a technicality that kind of find out the land on the, I don't know what side is that, oh, is it what side is it on? East, west, whatever side, the right-hand side off of three oh eight, wherever, yeah, that land has, has never been zoned. It's in the city, but it's never received a zoning. And so we can't plat it until it has a zoning designation. So we've asked the developers to come back in with a zoning application and a zoning exhibit and hopefully we can get that taken care of soon enough. I think the mayor's even considering doing a call meeting to try to expedite their approvals if they can get here with the zoning exhibit fairly charged with. But that's why I think tonight both items, number seven and eight, need to be officially tabled until we can bring them back off the table.
We'll pass over those two then, just for anybody that don't want to.
And the final plat has, we do have engineering on the final plat, so they're good to go except for the fact that we figured out they don't have zoning. Unless somebody knows something different, because the zoning map we're looking at is two thousand nine version and we can't find any documentation that it was done since two thousand nine, so.
Well, we'll take care of that.
Yeah.
If there's not objection, I want to go to the agenda items that involve, she's, there'll be number thirteen, discussing possible actions adopted ordinance number three nine one dash two five enacting a new section of chapter two of municipal code and establishing an effective date for management of domestic cat population. We talked about this last week, last meeting we had. Chief, do you have anything to add on that?
It's, it's basically a group that assists us on trapping. And how that works is you trap the animal, you take them, somebody's got to take them and get them to a vet. They pick them back up later in the day after they're ready to be picked up. You release them back in the same area that you trapped them in, they will have a clip on their ear from the vet so that you'll know when you trap that cat again and he's got a clipped ear, he's already been bit, so you can really lead him right away and go to the next one. So it's, keeps you from having too much back and forth. Early on, she says, expect to have no repeat cat getting trapped. It's just going to be, as you get further into this program, and it's about twenty-five dollars per cat to have them spayed or neutered at hand, but that's the way to control your cat population. But to bring them back to the area that you remove them from, that's one of the most important things that they outlined to me that they recommended with most of those programs.
So the cats will still be running around?
But they won't be reproducing.
But cats carry fleas and stuff?
Yes, yes. I talked to a couple of them and they, they were very adamant that if you remove those cats, you know, looking historically, people would just remove them, that's a void that will get filled eventually by cats that are still, that weren't captured, they will fill that void. So it's, it's problematic unless you were to completely eradicate, which is not ideal because you'll never really get to that point, so you have to spay, neuter, control them, that's the way it works.
We're, we're actually fixing them where they can't reproduce, but they control the turf.
Exactly.
Keep out the cats that would reproduce.
Right.
They still fight and all that kind of stuff.
They still seem to do that, but they, as, as time goes by, the population will dwindle because.
Correct.
They're not able to reproduce.
I'd want to totally eliminate them.
Right, it's, it's, it's a humane way to do it, and so that's kind of, when I've talked to multiple people, this is kind of where they steered me.
So there's a difference between domestic and feral?
Uh, yeah, a little bit, so.
You're talking about feral cats too?
Feral cats, something like that.
My sister's involved with that, she lives out in the, it's kind of spring and she traps feral cats and it's a fix and just turns them back loose.
Turns them back loose and you clip the ears, that way you can recognize them pretty quickly that you don't waste a trip to a vet with a cat that's already, you know, taken care of, so.
Any need for a motion or discussion?
Let me ask you a question as far as trapping them, are, is everybody responsible for their own trap or how is that going to work?
No, so I've got to find, either through this group I'm working with, either we will borrow, traps I do have, a couple of people that have indicated that they can, they would be willing to help us with that. So typically you would put out about four traps, four to ten, I think ten's a lot to do at one time when someone's got to take them and pick them up, that's, that's a lot of work. So they, we keep it to four to six, I think that's an ideal number. Things that they've taught me, they don't like to do it when it's really warm, so the temperature's been a little up and so she's encouraging me to wait a month or so, but the temperatures come down, which I, I understood when she went into detail why. So, but I think that that's, the trapping, it's basically going to be volunteers because I can't do it all myself, so I'm going to, that's why I'm going to ask for volunteers. They have to quit feeding them, that's one of the stipulations, at least for a while, until we can get them trapped and get this done, and then they can go back to feeding them, that's, that's fine, give, give us three to six months and let's get through it.
Is there a designated low-cost spay and neuter clinic that we're going to be using?
Yes, so the ones that we've looked at, there was one in Joshua and the lady, I'm waiting on her to come back, I think she's even, even closer than that. I'm hoping for somebody maybe at Thoseborough or something, we'll, we'll see what she comes back with. But they're roughly around twenty-five bucks, if you went and did that on your own for your private pet, it's not going to be twenty-five dollars, it's probably going to be north of a hundred. So the vets are working with us on keeping it low cost, there are times it will double to fifty and that's if the cat is pregnant, they can still do the spay, you know, they can still take care of that while they're pregnant, but it's a little more tricky, so there's an extra twenty-five dollar charge in a few instances that that would occur. But typically twenty-five bucks, I've called around the next or about where they're at for municipality control and working with them and reducing the cost that way.
Well, would this be done on, like, collect the animals and keep them in a place and then take them all at one time? Or would it be on a daily basis or as needed?
Probably, when I've talked to her about that, she's, she indicates she would do it weekly or bi-weekly, or every two weeks. She goes, so if you're, it depends on how many you're doing, if you're doing four to six, she goes, I would do them maybe once a week or every other week. If you're going to do a lot, she goes, then the problem there is you're going to need multiple volunteers to transport and then go pick them up later in the day, because you got to get them there by eight, eight or so in the morning and then you got to pick them up at around four to five.
Well, is there going to be a central holding area or do we keep them up at our own homes or what?
No, so the way, when you trap, the way she's described it, you will trap, the, the traps will be placed, let's say, in the evening in the afternoon like now, the next morning you would come back to that trap. Volunteers, we would go back, look, see what we got, take those cats that morning, let's say a Thursday morning, let's say we did it on a Wednesday night, Thursday morning we would take them, Thursday afternoon we go back, pick them up, bring them back, release them. So there wouldn't be any of the keeping them, you know, beyond, they would, they'd be in a, in a cage, basically in a trap overnight until the next morning when we go with the volunteers, we take possession of them and take the trap and that will handle it from there and then put them back in the cage and we'll come back, release them. And you can then reset that trap at that time, she encouraged me not to do that. She says, once you release, at least wait a couple of days. So she goes, that's why a lot of times people do it, like on a Wednesday or whatever, whatever day we agree to, to take them to the vet, you would do it on the night before, and that way they're not in that cage very long and people aren't having to feed them and all that stuff. It's, just tries to clean it up for everybody and make it a little less stressful on them.
Is there any further discussion or questions? I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number three nine one dash two five enacting a new section of chapter two of the municipal code and establishing an effective date for management of domestic cat population. Do we have the date in here? Yep.
I have a, I have a question, suppose that a, a cat is trapped that belongs to somebody and have them then get it neutered or spayed and they bring it back to that person, it may have been a cat's been fixed.
Right, that's part of the danger. If they've got a chip, the vets typically will check for a chip and tell us, hey, this cat belongs to this address or this person. It's like you would a dog or anything else. So there's, that's one, I guess safeguard they place in there, but beyond that, I don't know, it's, it's kind of, that's why it's like an education campaign, I'll have to put this out, this is what, what's happening, please stop feeding. And if you have a cat that you let roam a little bit, you might want to keep them inside for a while.
Well, suppose that a cat that's already been fixed is picked up, isn't it, but it doesn't have a notch on the ear, will they just notch it and let it return it?
So they'll, they'll flip it and that way we know for the future that, once you trap it, we're, we're just releasing it immediately.
Do we have a second?
I second it, I second that.
Okay.
Second your own.
Further discussion? The way it reads, it goes into effect as soon as it's published, after tonight. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ordinance number three nine one dash two five is adopted, enacting new session, section of chapter two of municipal code and establishing effective date for management of domestic cat population. We'll go to number fourteen, discuss amending the code of ordinances by repealing the existing section on dog carts and all train vehicles and replacing it with section ten point one two zero zero, use of highway vehicles and dog carts. And this is for discussion only tonight.
Cover's a bit broad here.
I think it's in our.
It's in there.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in here, but.
Way up the back.
I'm going to start making a table of the conference.
It's right before the act on. I know, I'm sorry, there's a loose one, so I didn't check the side in.
I don't like it.
It's right after the audit. Go to the two sides of the page. Not the end of it. We have found it. That was the same one that you had there, I'm sorry. Your next page. I guess, my, my question B, is it, what type of vehicles does it, does it identify? type of vehicles does it, uh, uh, does it identify? Is it any motor-driven?
I don't say any, um.
Vehicle or?
I think it's gonna be your, your ATVs, UTVs, four-wheelers, I think your dog carts.
That's the way I interpret it.
I don't think it's going to be like your motorized, you know, see the kids use them, it's not gonna be that.
Lawn mowers.
That's not my.
Lawn mowers.
Call that the George Jones.
George Jones, yeah.
And this is a thirty-dollar fee that it would be?
Yeah, and we've kind of talked about, you know, getting a sticker that would identify it readily, and be an annual, um, and we change the sticker maybe a little bit each year, but, um, it would also regulate, you know, make sure that they have insurance, license driver and what address, that's registered too, so that, you know, something were to happen, you know, um, could be hit and run or whatever, and it's left at the scene, we can figure out who it belongs to pretty quickly.
That's a great idea. And you have to be a licensed driver?
Yes, that's what's sixteen or above.
I'm surprised they ain't here tonight.
Me too.
I think they're all for it, for the most part, really do.
Well, this, how are we going to inform the citizens about this ordinance?
What was our, we discussed that.
Yeah, it's.
We'll tell them.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll be able to post it on our website, we'll also get a published in the paper, um, on Facebook, we'll get it on Facebook.
Okay, that'll, that'll, yeah, that'll stir them.
I know they already know about it, because when we did the parade a few weeks ago, a couple of them that ran the parade came over to me, and I was down there, and they were like, hey, are we okay? And I'm like, well, there's a parade exception to, I put that in there, so, and I, it's not even been discussed, much less put in place, I'm not carry on, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. But that, that parade exception is for, if it has to do with the parade?
Right, and they, they were, they were in the parade, so I was like, you can go on, continue on, I'm not here to do that, so, I think they had a few of them in the ATVs.
Ground H, there's those exceptions. B, as, prohibited operations has got some provisions that we probably need to look at and get some public input on. I like number two, we may have to teach some of these younger folks how to use hand signals.
I know, yeah.
Most of them got driving, like, they ought to know how to, what they're thinking of to use.
At least one of our council members learned how to drive vehicles that didn't have any working turn signals, so, I had to learn how to do. That's embarrassing. It wasn't, it's not that I'm that old, but the vehicles I was driving.
The vehicles that old and in disrepair, so.
Well, that was a close one.
I had to, oh, there were old trucks, things like that.
I took my farmer's license, test using a vehicle with no turn signal. That just shows you how old I am.
Kind of, kind of tough when you don't have ma, when you have manual steering and no signals.
That's right.
But, well, we, we survived, uh, yeah, I, I like some of this about the, uh, being restrained, people being in each other's laps and overloaded, because I know some of them.
Yeah, or standing or riding.
Standing over the back, whatever, that's kind of dangerous.
So you're just discussing it.
Yes, we can, we can find to it, as we like. And what about on main streets, since that's a US highway, is there any restrictions on that?
It's gotta be thirty-five or below, uh, which you have a, uh, my preference would be you can cross main street, but you can't.
I don't want anybody that's gonna be in the main, uh, lane, they might be on the.
Might be on the side.
The side, uh.
Which, you know, that's kind of okay, I guess, but for a short distance, I would want them to go from here to.
Is that the same with Water Street?
From here to school.
Yeah, it's a long one.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you can cut across and then go down one of the side streets that's not near as busy.
Sure.
Water Street being the same thing, or, you don't care if Water Street is registered? We, I just know there's a lot of traffic that goes to the road ranger. I have not been doing it at all, mine can barely get out of Lower Park. It's got three wheels on it.
It depends on where we go with this, to me, because if you go to make it, you, you, there's a way to get a plate, uh, from DPS on them, each one of them, and register them, as likely would to make them, almost like a street legal vehicle, at that point. I'm a lot more, um, lenient when we have that option, if we're gonna go that route, so.
This includes having seat belts, how many seat belts are actually on an ATV?
They'll go.
Do they? Okay.
A lot of them won't go above a certain speed, you know.
Well, that's, that's good, but.
But people will seatbelt them in and behind them and, and do that, so, but I mean, I've worked too many fatalities with, especially kids, you know, that I, I just, I wanted to put that in there. And I, I don't know, it depends on what vehicle hits you, it's probably not gonna matter, but I mean, it's just another safety measure.
In my younger days, I flipped a ATV and broke my shoulder.
They're easy to turn over.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
So, I know a lot of accidents.
And as far as the city, we're gonna be, uh, not sued or anything, right? As far as an accident, so.
That's, there's a provision in here for that, kind of harmless or something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like, you have it in here, a provision about the slow-moving vehicle emblem.
Yeah, here's the, there's one.
I don't know if they're usually equipped with that or not, I'm not familiar with it.
Tractors are, but not usually necessarily those, so. And I think that comes into play as to where we're, we would allow them, if they're gonna ride, let's say, Water Street, you know, where the speeds kind of go above thirty-five, um, certainly. And then, as we all know, some of these ATVs, they can do highway speeds, I mean, there's some of them that can really get up, and, and, decent-powered ones, they can go past thirty miles an hour, it just kind of depends on which, which vehicle we're talking about, you know.
What if they've got lights on, front and back, I think they're okay.
They're light, if they've got lights, and they're, it's, to me, that's, you know, that's a big part of it, I mean, because you, you see them, and, and they don't have lights, and they're running, and that's, you've got lots of issues there. So, I think it just depends on, which is part of why I like the sixteen-year-old and above with the licensed driver, because they know, um, every light's on, they know what's a vehicle supposed to look like. They've driven before, they can judge distance, and some of the speeds on, if they're crossing seventy-seven here and there's an eighteen-wheeler coming, I'd rather not be a nine-year-old making that judgment, calling a cross or not, you know?
I just wanna say I'm not.
And I'm not against, I love them.
I don't wanna put, uh, restrictions on people, because, you know, it's a rural area, but on the other hand, we're getting more and more traffic here, and these are people that don't live here, that are, they're, they're in a hurry to get on the road, and, uh, it gets more and more risky.
Well, I enjoy it, I mean, riding mine, I mean, a lot of fun, but I mean, it's, there's, I'm just trying to come up with a way to make it safe, and a way to identify one if it's involved in something.
Because I know if, uh, highway patrol catches, they told me, they, they stopped a man in Avalon, he was on thirty-four. And you tell them, don't you know this is a five-thousand-dollar fine, this, that he's supposed to be on the main highway? So, he's, I'm gonna warn you this time, but if I catch you again, you're gonna be out of five thousand dollars.
That's some thirty-four.
Your brother-in-law.
I'm just personally concerned about those under age.
Right.
They're the ones who, I really don't, I, I worry about that.
They don't have experience to judge that distance and speed that's coming out when they're crossing, that's the issue.
And if it goes sixty miles an hour, and they're gonna push it to the limit.
I think we oughta maybe put this out, uh, for people to see, and then, uh, you know, invite comment, and see what, if anybody's got any, any, uh, good, uh, suggestions that, that we need to consider, we need to see about, uh, amending some of this language, or adding to, taking from, whatever. And so we can make a, make a good decision at our next meeting, and go ahead and implement it, where our officers can, uh, have another tool there to help make us safer, make our community safer. But I didn't, I didn't want us to act on it, that's why I put it on here, as a discussion only, because sometimes people get a little upset if they weren't given an opportunity to, you know, to have some input into it, so. So we'll do that, and, uh, if there's not any further discussion, we'll, uh, go on to something else here. Number nine, sixteen, uh, discuss possible action to improve a contract with Axon Enterprise A, purchase of body cameras, dash cameras, and storage services.
So what that's about, our watch guard system that we have was bought in twenty eighteen, um, we have basically one working, good camera for my officers. And so, what happens is that battery can get depleted, depending on how many batteries we have, and we're running out of those, so, I contacted Watch Guard, they did not wanna repair it. They weren't real interested in doing a whole lot with it, um, I then contacted Axon, that seems to be the industry standard for police body cam and dash cam videos. Uh, I talked to the district attorney about it, um, she, um, wants us to have a better system, what's happening is, the, the cameras we have now, they are in the middle of a contact, they could be an arrest, or, you know, interview, or whatever, and they enter the, camera cuts off, and so then, we don't, the officer won't know it. Later on, I get an open record request, I go to pull it, and then allegation is made against me that, well, yeah, you also, you turned it off.
Turned it off.
I'm like, oh, it's, you gotta understand, we've got an old system here, and it's working the best we've got, what we have, uh, it's not anything intentional, but it, it's the allegation of that, it's bothersome, uh, but, speaking with Axon, that cost originally was in the one-twenty, uh, one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, uh, she got down to that, the original, and it's an annual payment, uh, it's a pretty neat system, um, it allows for, um, uh, every two and a half years, they change over your equipment, your body cams, go to new equipment at two and a half years, that's what you're paying for, and your data storage. It has a, uh, a device on it that it can actually translate what you're speaking in Spanish to somebody, so it can, it will have that ability. It has license plate readers on the, on the cameras, so it will always be reading the plates, so if you're driving down Main Street, and it reads the plate, and it detects that's a stolen, you're fixing to turn around and go make a stop, so, um, it gives you a lot of data, uh, and it protects us on the equipment. She goes, in five years down the road, you say you're done with us, we come out on the, at the end of your contract, and we change out your equipment to brand-new, and you've got brand-new equipment, and they need to go find storage for it. Which is always the big ticket item, really, um, but, I think, um, I just wanted y'all to see what that's on the cost, and I think with a grant rider, I think I can parlay that down quite a bit, there may be a matching fund in there, if they do fifty-plus percent or something like that, but at least I can get that down even more. But I won't know until the spring, so we're gonna have to work what we got until then.
Is this something that, when it's paid off, it will be ours to own, or is this like, it'll be recurring?
The system, uh, she comes, they would come in and put in a new system, they would take out our watch guards, she goes, you can sell that, do whatever you want, I don't know if we'd get anything for it, because it's, like I said, it's pretty built, you know, pretty old. You get a new system, two and a half years, they come in and they change out our body cams, dash cams stay, they change those out in the, in the initial contract, two and a half years, they change out body cam. At five years, they change out body cam and dash cam, and you decide if you wanna continue with a new contract, the price of business, and that is gonna go up in five years. But she says, if nothing else, at five years, you decide, don't just can't do it anymore, you're at least gonna have, we're gonna hand you new equipment, new batteries, to get you down the road at a minimum, which is what we don't have right now.
Do we need to take action to, to lock into this price, or do we need to wait on?
Well, here's, here's the thing, um, it's five payments. The first one, and if you notice how she's staggered them, she backloaded some of them.
Right.
Um, the first one's lower, because I would use forfeiture funds to pay the first year, so there would not be a budget in it until next year, if we wanted to move forward with it. I believe I can get some grants to help cover some of that, but I, I don't know that we would, I, it's one of those, I think we can, but you just never know. So that's kind of the issue there, and so the, the price, she expects an increase, obviously, after the first of the year, so I'm already aware of that, so, that's why we were talking about it. I have signed the contract with her, with the intent that it's not binding until we have a meeting and talk about it tonight, I talk to her tomorrow or next week, and we make a decision if we're gonna move forward, or if we're gonna wait a little bit. That's where we left it, when I talked to her last week, so.
Well, it's not gonna get cheaper.
No, it's not.
I think it's, um, our officers may help their safety.
That, and give somebody, give that information on that license plate reader, it's gonna continue to read plates, um, and that would help, you know, again, with the next item, which is the flock, so it's gonna work together.
So the flock is gonna be in addition to this?
Yes, it's a different company, and it's, the original cost is, I think, around thirty-fourish thousand for the system we were looking at, um, but, in future years, it's drops to like thirty or thirty-one, because you're paying for an installation in the initial contract, uh, in the initial outline, but it's an a, it's an annual payment.
For the flock?
For the flock, it would be an annual payment of around thirty, thirty-one thousand, uh, I would like to really look at a grant, uh, I've spoken to Auto Theft, Passport, and I think we can maybe get that, maybe approve it, but we'll see, that one I would like to wait a little bit, if y'all.
Yeah, uh, I, the only, the only thing I got about this flock's safety is a big brother.
Right, it is, it's always watching, and.
For a small town, you know.
Right, uh, one of the things that, last week, uh, the county was out here running commercial with a bid up on enforcement, and frustrated me, because we're not, we're been told we can't do a vehicle, they can come do it here in front of my station. So, I wasn't happy with that, but if I put one three oh eight, whatever I can monitor, I can go in and look, how many vehicles per day, how many of them are commercial, and so they can break it, I can break that data down and use that to go to DPS and go to the state and say, hey, or text Doc, say, this is what I've got coming through my city, you know, we have this much carpal traffic, I'm gonna need a variance in your policy to allow us to have a commercial with a vehicle enforcement here, which I'm sure they would place restrictions of once a month or something like that, of enforcement, which is fine. But it would allow us a foot in the door on that, but it would give you some data points to, you, you wouldn't be flying blind on it, you would actually have something to back up what you're telling them. But those are, you know, like I said, I think, I, I think with Auto Theft, and there's a couple others out there, I think I can maybe. But those are, you know, like I said, I think, I think with AutoFAB and there's a couple others out there, I think I can maybe able to get that. And that's not as pressing as the body cams. Body cameras are frustrating. I had a meeting again today with the DA. She was asking where we were at on it and I said, well, we're gonna discuss it tonight. We'll see.
Just getting a little off the subject, maybe you don't wanna talk about it, but it seems like we're having a lot more interaction with the district attorney's office now than we do with prior administrations. Is that accurate or not? I know you hadn't been here, so maybe you can't judge, but.
You tell me.
I don't really deal with them, so they they don't do our best.
Okay. Probably so. Reason for that, I like to keep that open communication. When we have a major case, she wants to be called out. So if we have a fatality, she wants to be called out, whether it's a wreck or murder or whatever, child crime, whatever. In fact, that's what we were meeting for today, was the child crimes. We were working on policy implementation. So she wants the whole county to have the resources. I met with the sheriff. He's gonna allow that if we needed it for crime scene purposes, to use as crime scene. So I'm trying to keep that open and meetings and dialogue going so that when I pick up the phone, they don't ask who's it, you know, they know who it is.
Appreciate that. It's something that we've striven for for years, is to have better communication with the other agencies in the county and I think then.
With the Ellis County, yeah, the Ellis County Crimes Against Children Unit, the CAC unit up there, I've worked with them for years. I was on the initial executive board where we had designed the policies and heard calls from the state to for this county to have for their child advocacy centers. So in fact, I'm sitting with them, those two ladies today. I'm very good friends with them. I text and talk with them all the time. And so I guess that familiarity I have with them is.
Works a lot.
Good for, you know. And one of the investigators there was there today, the DA investigator, and me and him got a kid out of Mexico that was being trafficked a couple of years ago. And we were talking about that today. They brought that up and said, you need to tell them, y'all, you two work together. Y'all don't even know each other and you ended up doing this and getting that kid and, you know, all the way down to Mexico City. Yeah, we worked an international case. He filed charges from the Lothian on these guys. So but I guess, you know, again, my relationship with them is pretty good over the years, so.
We we considered that when you were interviewing. I guess I can reveal that. Yeah, I I think in the past that some of the communication with our agencies hasn't been the best. And I think a lot of it, they just didn't, some of those to the north of us just didn't take this into consideration much for whatever reason. I'm glad that that's changing. And we appreciate your efforts at doing that. Well, let's get back to the our agenda item. What are we gonna do with this proposed contract?
No, I I.
Well, we're talking about the body cams right now.
The body.
Oh, body cams.
We're not gonna do anything with flock anyway. We were just discussing that. But I hate to see, I mean, it's a commitment of money, but on the other hand, I I can't see an officer doing work and then it turns out that part of it's not recorded and it's effort wasted.
Well, I will say that's one of the issues with the DA has been talking to me about when I get these, I get a lot of requests from the district attorney, investigators, as well as the the DAs, the ADAs. And they'll say, well, we need the video on this. And I'll send it to them. They go, only a partial video. And I'm like, I know that, given what I got. Or what's happened the last couple of weeks, the cases are from twenty four or whatever, and it's too old for me to download it to the thumb drive. Whereas this system is not a thumb drive system. It is a cloud system. So I can go in and click on it, email it to them. There's no, I don't need to.
Saves you time.
I don't have to drive up there with a thumb drive and pack and all this stuff and hope it works and they've got a, you know, there's none of that. It's send it to them.
If I could, she would have, if she could just recreate the scene that you've lost.
Yeah, I guess I could. Figure that out.
We have a motion. I'd like a motion to approve a contract with Axon Enterprises Inc. for the purchase of body cameras, dash cameras and storage services. Any further discussion?
So money, well, he's paying for it.
I've got your first payment and I might be able to get the, I mean, it's.
Oh, okay.
The the first seventy five hundred, I pay it.
True.
Forbitter. So you don't, there won't be a payment till next December roughly, so.
Okay.
That gives me a lot of time to come up with other funds.
Makes me feel better.
Yeah.
Somebody else.
Makes us sleep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I second it.
Or somebody.
Yeah.
We're we're ready to vote unless there's more questions. Not all those favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any post, the contract with Axon Enterprises Inc. for purchase of body cameras, dash cameras and storage services is approved, is ready. Chief, you can go forward with that. Did we wanna discuss the flock surveillance cameras anymore or did we already get that thoroughly?
If you have any questions, I'll answer them. It's a, it's something that I think that would be beneficial. I I get the Big Brother aspect of it, especially with it watching the Road Ranger twenty four seven. And recording, it just records plates. Every vehicle passes it and it just records. And it logs it, so we can go in there and can tap into it in real time. It will alert us and, you know, it's just a, just another safety tool, really, along with that Axon system. We're in China.
Just to discuss.
Yeah.
It's just a discuss. Do they have different levels of package deals that, I mean, we wouldn't need as comprehensive as a deal as, say, Walksahatchee, because we're so little?
Right. So each camera, pole, installation costs about sixty five hundred to seven thousand dollars. So this was a thirty four thousand. So you're looking at roughly four to five cameras. Different cameras cost different. So the the recording camera is a little more expensive. So that camera costs more to have it focused solely on, let's say, the Road Ranger, which is where a lot of our, get some of these calls that we can, criminality comes from. We can pull that up and it's gonna record and we have, we can zoom in, we can do a lot of things with it at the same time it's recording the plates. So that camera costs more than just when it's recording the plates, if that makes sense. So that camera might be eight or nine thousand dollars versus sixty five hundred for that, a regular camera.
So so you pay for each camera individually? Okay.
So how far back can you go on a, how long to keep the video?
On the on the video?
Yeah.
I think she was, when I was asking about, you know, like if we get a a case that comes in till, say, tonight and we come in tomorrow and we got this going, can we go back? She goes, absolutely, because you've got quite a bit of time to go back for it. I know on the cameras that record plates, I don't think it, he he can punch in one, they'll go back, eight months ago, it was in Tucson or whatever. He showed that to me, so you have that data. And that, they'll all have passwords to go in there and pull that up and.
Yeah.
Do a hot list if they're looking for certain people, certain cars, and they can go in and say, okay, that car's frequenting these cameras and and Walksahatchee or here or whatever. So you can kind of figure out where they're living and where they're frequenting.
So that flock number is at thirty five thousand, roughly, thirty six thousand, what was it, something like that?
Initially, and I think after that, it goes like thirty oneish, because you don't pay the install or it occurred. So you're paying for part of the install.
So you pay a yearly thirty one thousand?
Yearly. When I talked to AutoFAB, Passport guys, they indicated there's grants that will grant you five years, ten years of flock. So then you've got it. And I asked the flock contractor, so, okay, so we do this for five years and we don't have any money to do it anymore. He goes, well, just come get cameras. You don't owe us nothing.
They have a competitor?
I don't know of one. When I talked to Axon, if they could, if they have that ability, and they said, no, theirs ties in as well, because it's a license plate reader on our cameras. Theirs is a separate system, but they said the flock is a different system, but you, you're still gonna be recording plates off of a dash cam, but you're not gonna have near the capacity that that flock is coming off the highway where it just continues turning those numbers up. Whereas on the car, it's gotta be turned on in patrol lane to record those plates or have cameras up twenty four seven.
And how many cameras was that for the flock system that we would get for that thirty six thousand?
This was about four cameras, I think.
Just kind of put it all in that. What other agencies around here have it?
The only ones that I know of in this area, Walksahatchee, there's nobody south of Walksahatchee. And that's where we got that hit. The other day, and a guy, officer guy on the radio says, anybody south on thirty five, we just got a walk hit on a fellow vehicle, this, this and this. And Charles says, I went out there, sit on the highway and it goes by me about ten minutes later, I pulled it over, stolen that one. They did a bunch of dim flips. There was a lot of work still and still, still to be done on that one. So a lot of, a lot of work on that. These guys are getting really good at it.
What other information does it collect of the licensed plate reader? Does it collect speed of a vehicle?
Uh, no, it doesn't do speed. It will do, like, you can program it to hit for felony warrants only and stolen. And it's what it'll, it'll just keep reading. And when it pops one up, it'll send you an alert. Here's the vehicle and it'll send it to you. Here's the vehicle plate, here's the vehicle, and it's got felony warrant out of Walksahatchee or, you know, Dallas or whatever.
And be on the lookout type thing?
And it'll say, it'll tell you where it spotted it. So with multiple cameras in the city, you may get two hits, you kind of know they're going through the city and so you can kind of go stop. But it's really expensive.
Oh, yes.
So I think there's ways that we can get that brought way down if if not to zero.
How long has this been in existence?
Flock's been around several years. Basically, when you, like, you go drive on the North Colway or whatever in Dallas, those cameras, that's, that's basically a flock system. It's it's reading, DPS has access, it's reading those cameras. It's similar to that. So that technology's been there. Now they're expanding it out to municipalities, to police departments.
Technology so fast, it'll be obsolete in five years.
And it's, uh, there's no power going to it. It's, I think it's solar powered the whole time, so it's, it doesn't drain any energy usage. That's one of the bummer's to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on flock cameras? If not, I think we'll move to number fifteen, review ordinance seventy point seven zero zero and possible action to fill a grant exemption to Riley Malone, allow application of, I'm not even gonna try to pronounce those words, but it's PS, P S A's substances within the city limits, the city of Milford. Mr. Cars, some explanation. We have been contacted by an attorney for Mr. Malone. Is there anyone here that's here on that subject?
I am, but I don't, I don't need to speak right now.
Okay, I was gonna give you the opportunity. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything or not, but.
I'd be uncomfortable without your lawyer here.
Sorry?
I'd be uncomfortable without the city's lawyer here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I understand that. Anyway, we turned it over to our attorneys, Nathan Hale Smith and Lee, and the recommendation we got back from them was, their analysis was that there is a state statute called the Texas Right to Farm Act, which basically says that agricultural operations that are in effect cannot be prohibited by city ordinances and maybe county ordinances too, I'm not sure. But if they're already something that has been ongoing before the ordinance was enacted. So I put on the agenda the wording that our attorneys told us to put down, and that is to consider either repealing the ordinance altogether or granting an exemption to Mr. Malone. And the letter I got explaining it, I didn't get until today, which says their recommendation is is not either one of those, but actually to amend the ordinance to allow a, an affirmative defense to prosecution. If a, if the party that's being accused can prove that, you know, that they were using these chemicals prior to the effective date of our ordinance. So I'm kind of torn as to what to do, because it's, we didn't actually put on our agenda to amend the ordinance, so.
Well, how does?
But anyway, that's, that's how this came about.
But part of the issue is that it's seeping into our waters, underground waters. So that is an issue that goes beyond just farming.
Just not doing the water costs cancer. Anybody with high blood pressure, anybody with high cholesterol, it affects your health. I can see it don't, but it do. It's like that office mail, we mail for two weeks.
I know. That's terrible.
I'm just.
He just putting it out there.
Putting it out there. That's what our our attorneys have recommended that we, that we do this and.
The people in Johnson County, they got them to stop doing it over in their area. I don't know how they were able to do that.
I don't know.
What'd you say, sir?
No, they're, they're still applying in Johnson County.
Are they?
My, you know, is it not something, I'm, I'm, policy wise, I'm not in favor of it at all. I think we enacted the ordinance because there was, we felt like there was a need to protect public safety and public health. But, and we're certainly not bowing to any pressure that's being put on us. But, you know, our attorneys are advising us to take this action, so that's what I wanted to put before the council. But I'm not sure that the recommendation is in line with our the language we got in our, on our agenda. But I think it's always a proper course of action. I don't know what your attorneys advise you to do. It keeps you out of litigation, so. This is just one of those situations where the, there's a state law that keeps us from taking the action that we took. So we can either repeal the ordinance, or we can grant the exemption, or we can come back. Of course, if we repeal, we can always come back and and reinstate with the defense. That's one option. The other option is to not take action and just consider the amendment at our next meeting. Well, if we're gonna follow our attorney's recommendation, yeah, we have to put an affirmative defense into the existing ordinance. And of course, if we repeal the ordinance tonight, then we would have to reenact the the ordinance with the amendment language in it. So of course, that exposes us for, you know, for that window of time before we reenact it, someone could use it. I don't know if they would, but then they would be, be able to get around a restriction.
I'm just worried about some of the land of this Mr. Malone's is in a flood plain.
Right.
And I, I don't know.
I'm not sure what the remedies are as far as nuisance suits. I'm not sure what the remedies are, uh, as far as nuisance suits, either, either public or private. I would assume more likely that the city would not be able to file suit, but I don't know about private individuals, if they feel like they're harmed by, you know, chemicals that he applies that travels onto their property, uh, infects their land or water or whatever. I'm not sure if this statute affects that or not, but it's not really our concern as a city council.
So your feeling is to repeal it?
Well, my feeling would, I, I, I think it'd be best for us not to repeal it, because that leaves us exposed until such time as we reenact it, and someone else was to use these.
Yeah.
Chemicals, and they could say, well, we, we used them when the, and, and we would, we would qualify for this affirmative defense. I don't know if we grant an exemption, whether we can withdraw it or not, but, I mean, no lawyers are saying this is what the, uh, the prosecutors would prefer to, to have it written as an affirmative defense as well. And I think it would, if we did that, that's gonna give Mr. Malone what he, what he's seeking, which is not something that makes us happy, but it makes us in compliance with the law and, with the state law and with what our attorneys are recommending. And two, I would say this, uh, he's not in any danger as long as we don't bring charges against him, which we're not gonna do, uh, so.
Yeah.
I would think that if we, if we tabled this and, and, uh, put it on our agenda for our next meeting, then I think that would probably be the, the best course of action, uh, considering what our.
Yeah.
Our council is advising us, and since they're not here to answer questions, if, if we need them to do that, we can cut, bring them to the meeting and go into executive session and flesh it out.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, there just wasn't time to put all that together today, but we did want to, uh, get it on the agenda and, and get it discussed, uh.
Yeah.
So, uh, we don't want, uh, you know, they're getting some pressure from Mr. Malone's counsel, so they wanted to show good faith that we're trying to, trying to work with them and, uh, and avoid litigation.
Yeah, I agree there. Um, and table it till next month?
And if we have a, uh, a meeting between now and then, we can certainly consider putting on the agenda for that.
Yeah.
Any motion to have?
Probably so. Let's, let's do that for a moment.
I would like to make a motion that we table. Number fifteen?
Number fifteen.
Sorry. That we table the, any action to repeal or grant an exemption to Riley Malone to allow the application of the. Oh, for, how long?
PFA's.
PFA substance within the city limits of the city of Milford.
Is there a second? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Uh, we'll table that and we'll table it up at our next meeting, uh, using the correct terminology of, uh, amending the ordinance and, uh, we'll look at, using the language that our council has, uh, has recommended. Okay, go to, which you wanna go to next?
The fall cleanup.
All right, let's discuss possi- this is number eleven, discuss impossible action to approve a fall cleanup event and schedule a date.
Hopefully we can get something in November on Saturday. Swish.
Uh, we'll just go on Thursday.
Now, we just have to figure out how many, uh, dumps, or dumpsters that we want.
Want to do a, a room first or eight?
It's up to you. You'll be there.
I, I would give two days, just in case we can't get all the dumpsters on Wednesday, someone has a schedule.
Oh, okay.
I, that's what we did last time, just in case, because by the time we go to schedule, we'll make sure that we have those days available.
You think the dumpster day, or, I mean.
Two possible dates.
Two possible dates to have it, just in case one doesn't work out.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
DCI given us any?
No. Our contract with Domoing is for one cleanup, so the fees are in here, but the fees and what we used in April, to kind of give y'all an idea of what we do paying. We do three, normally two thirty yards and one, two thirty yards and one forty.
Yeah, I would just say just get two just for fall, just a little light fall, you know?
Just two thirty?
Yeah, just two thirty.
Are you getting them there yet?
Mm-hmm, we have two, that's where our contract is.
But we have eight and fifteen, maybe, remember?
Do we need to give the city like more time, like, to get the stuff together, take the fifteen, maybe?
We're gonna get two to, so.
Huh?
They're gonna try to get two days, just in case one doesn't work out.
Eight and fifteen?
Do you want to do fifteen twenty-second?
Yeah, eight and fifteen, we'll shoot for the eight.
Well, I know, I know, and otherwise, we're getting into December, it's gonna be cold, cold.
Yeah, we'll do eight and fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Not shot for eight.
Shot for the eight.
Yeah, shot for the eight.
And we're getting how many?
Two thirty.
Thirty.
Two thirty yards.
How much they charging us for that?
Uh, four hundred and fifty dollars per thirty yard for seven days, and then sixty dollars per ton when it's dumped.
Four hundred and fifty per, per thirty yard?
Five hundred, five hundred and forty.
Boy, just likes to run.
Five hundred and forty for the thirty yard, and then sixty per ton. And it's about, in April, it probably averaged about three tons per dumpster.
Now, that dumpster probably gonna fill up pretty quick, so first gone, first served.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it'd be a popular thing, I think it's, does good though.
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve a fall cleanup event on the eighth of November, or possibly the fifteenth of November.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, we'll set for either November eighth or fifteen. As availability is known, just determine that. Okay, number twelve, uh, discuss impossible action to review and approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four annual financial audit within our packet. We don't have anybody here, uh, from our auditors to explain this to us, but that's, uh, not the most riveting, luxury, uh, presentation we ever get here, so, uh, I trust that y'all read this and kind of understand it. Most of us have been on the council for several years and kind of know about audits.
I wish we could have the city, have them read it through.
The important thing to, I think the most important thing about an audit is to, the fact that there's no money missing, and, uh, other than that. It's just assets and debts and liabilities, and we, we kind of know what they are already, but it's good to have somebody look into it and, and make sure that, uh, you know, everything's being around the way it should be financially.
It's, uh, as far as the direct borrowings and direct placement, that two hundred and seventy-four thousand.